Um, public comment on study session items.
Do the pledge of allegiance?
No, not three.
Okay, alright. Do you want to start?
Sure. So, um, councils received the budget. Um, last meeting, we did a budget presentation. Mr. Bradford gave some highlights. Um, this study session is just, we have a couple more coming as well, but just wanted to ask if any council members had some specific questions or items they wanted to go through, we can go over in detail. We have some department heads here and, um, any questions you have, we'll, you know, answer tonight or follow up at the next meeting. Um, so any initial questions, we can go through the council members or we can, I was telling the mayor, we can go through the, the CIP in a little more detail, the capital improvement plan, or the transportation improvement plan, if that would be something council's interested in talking about.
You can start with, do you have questions?
Well, you know me, I have questions.
Let's kick it off.
Yeah, I guess we'll, we'll start with you and work our way down.
So, you know, I appreciate all that work that went into this, this presentation. It was very helpful and thorough, but I guess I'd like some background, how you figured out your projections. Like, you know, I don't know, did you read Kipplinger newsletter? Did you pick it up at meetings? And, you know, for like, things like health insurance and utilities?
Um, so whether it's for health insurance, there's some assumptions made, but then ultimately we do get, actually had a meeting this morning over healthcare options, so.
Okay.
What was the first part of the question?
Well, I, I guess I was just looking for, like, what kind of percentages in your assumptions did you build it?
Yeah, so, um, Ed has some information on that, but for healthcare, it was 10% increase. And we've been pretty fortunate the last couple of years with not having a large rate increase, but we have some options this year. We'll need to talk to the unions about some options, but, um, yeah, we're, it doesn't look like it's going to be quite that high, but.
That's good.
We need to, those details are still, still coming.
I guess, uh, do you, I have stuff that's related to capital improvements. Should I hold off on that?
No, go ahead and ask whatever questions you got. We'll just go down and.
Under the PFA contamination issue?
Yes.
Is there any possibility of an insurance claim on that? Grant funding to assist?
So there, we did ask initially, um, our attorney and the insurance company, it was not something that could be covered by insurance. So that was one of the first things we did look at. Um, what was this, in the second part of the question?
There's any grant funding available?
Possibly. We do always ask our state legislative representatives about that.
On the water bond debt?
Do you have a page number, Laney, that you were referencing?
I guess page 27.
Okay.
For the water bond debt. Um, you know, I, I like that it talks about the future and everything. And it talks about upgrades, 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 but I'm a little, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking about, what if we have new construction, like, been talked about at the Wagner Center, Matt, you know, and then what's going on behind Matt Park? How is that going to be? Is, are those costs going to be considered as well?
I'm not sure that there's cost necessarily when a new development goes in, because typically the developer has to pay to hook up to that. So there's six system connection charges.
Right.
And they pay to run the water mains, generally.
Oh, okay.
So, the water main replacements that are contemplated in the water fund are things that are in conjunction with street projects, street reconstruction.
Okay.
Um, and so we try to match those up. But there's just, um, like, Fourth Street is an example, there's, there's an awful lot of water mains that's got to be replaced there. And, uh, the, the water utility has the ability to service the debt, if they have to borrow for that, but it doesn't have the ability to pay for it in cash. So it just, it needs to be financed.
Okay, yeah, I understood that part. Um, I noted the wireless network upgrade, and, I assume it's all the city buildings, but does that include the Ramstow?
So we have, um, a very extensive wireless network, and, um, some of the buildings are connected with fiber. The rest of them are connected wireless. So the Ramstow is one of them that's connected to that network.
Okay. Do we have any, um, places where visitors can access the?
Yeah, we have public wifi at both the beaches, and we have wifi for the boaters at the marina. And in our city buildings, for the most part, there are public wireless networks that are designed for when people are here to do business, generally, so.
Okay. Um, the situation described about the HVAC at the fire department, I don't know if you guys read, it sounds pretty awful. Um, it sounds expensive to run, just the way it's set up, and unsafe because of breathing the fumes. Is there any way to move the timeline up?
And that's the, that's the connection of the fire truck diesel? Is that what you're talking about, or the?
It's the having a couple furnaces going and, and the fact that it draws in the exhaust from the diesels, yeah.
It may be in the capital improvement plan.
Yeah, it's in the capital improvement part.
Which page do you want, I'm sorry.
I didn't write down the page.
If you open that one up.
The separate one, I'm sorry.
Be under the buildings.
So probably back here.
Look on the bookmark.
Forty-seven of the.
I'll just make a general comment on the capital improvement fund. Anything that's in years two, three, four, five and six are, some of them are programmed more than others, but that, they're just placeholders. So if that becomes a higher priority or more important, or, you know, we, we do slide things around from time to time. So that's a conversation with the, the chief, um, as to what, you know, what, what's his priorities. And I think right now he's focusing on the building envelope. Chief Fernand is here, he can speak to that if you'd like.
Yeah, when I came to that, so I did. I looked at the fire station as I basically went from the top down, and I looked at all the different things that I saw that need to be replaced with it. Um, with the work that was being done with the exterior and that, what I did is I just kind of put it in, in an order of taking care of the exterior projects, then moving on into the more interior ones like that. Um, there is some parts that we are, um, have some grants out that I'm hoping that will help with some of the diesel exhaust thing, that I'm hoping to hear about that, um, just, I'll say like, four or five months from now, and that, and, uh, but yeah, we do plan on looking at, um, moving it back and forth depending on how the rest of the building shakes out.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Thanks.
This is again in capital improvement, uh, the water, the sewer section, uh, what page would that be?
There's refuse, there's 115.
So it.
Might be good, uh, you know, like the bag your hand.
So it talks about, oh, here we go. I guess, starting on page 69. But on page 71, it notes a main boiler replacement in 2027. And then for, um, on page 73, for 2028, it mentions, uh, upgrade the digesters. So I'm, I would hope, I would like the city to explore the possibility of maybe installing a methane generator, and it would kind of fit the two pieces together. And then, there might be some green grants out there.
I can speak to that a little bit. Uh, Mr. McCullough is not here today. The city used to have, um, a digester cover that captured the methane. And the problem they had with that was, it was, it's a very dirty gas, and it's very expensive to clean, and it caused all kinds of operational issues. And when the digester cover lid failed, um, maybe about a year and a half ago, and we got it replaced, that new system doesn't capture the methane.
Right.
So, um, it's, it's a possibility, but it's, uh, it's definitely increases operational expenses. And I'm not sure with the new digester cover, if it would be accommodating for that. Probably would not be. They, they decided to abandon that a long time ago, actually, so.
Because I would think there'd be cost savings not having to pay to heat the place.
Um, I don't think when it was running, it covered all the gas needs for the building as it was, so. But Mr. McCullough could elaborate that on, more on that.
So I guess the last things, um, I noted where all the departments made concessions. And, you know, that makes sense, but I didn't note City Hall making any concessions. So.
What do you mean by City Hall?
Well, I guess I see things that, as, you know, just as a taxpayer, for example, I really don't understand why we're purchasing water. I mean, our city water is safe to drink. It, um, you know, can, we all know it's not a good thing for our garbage dumps. I mean, everybody can bring their own water if they feel they're going to need to. And I also, as I recall, the way we're setting out the water, if we buy city water, I mean, bottled water, it needs to be available for all the taxpayers. It shouldn't be behind in an office break room, or like, um, it'd be presented at the door as people come in. And so that would, I, I don't know between, I'm sure with every building, it's got to be, you know, a savings. And, you know, it might be considered micromanaging, but that's not my intent. It's just cost savings, and I just don't think it's a good way to spend taxpayer dollars. And, um, I guess the other thing I would note, and I'm not 100% sure on this, this is just from observing, I think the copiers are set to default color instead of black and white. So, you know, again, you know, you can slap me for micromanaging, but it's just a suggestion. If it defaulted to black and white, you know, I, I kind of believe, you save the pennies, the dollars follow.
They're not set to default the color, and if they are, it's operator error.
Okay.
Yep.
But I, it's something that, it seems like every time I get a copy, you know, quickly, it's in color. And, you know, you know, you know yourself that there's a.
Well, I don't know, council members, I don't know who's making the copiers, the copies for you, but you have a choice between black and white and color. You just have to press the right button, so.
In my office, it's black and white.
Okay. And that's it? Thank you.
Jim?
Okay. Um, I have so many issues here that. On the water utility.
Will you let us know what page you're on?
Yeah, I'm going to give you.
I was trying to find it.
I would wrote down pages if I didn't know.
I got so many of these things. On the boat launch, on page 105. It's like Laney says, we're nitpicking, but the thing is, to 2004, we paid 3,841 for electricity, water, um, and, and we're putting in 8,000 eventually in the budget for 2006. Where do we use water down at the boat launch?
The boat launch pays for the water and the electricity for the fish cleaning station.
Okay, that's what I was wondering if we were getting into that. Okay, there's, uh, on the sellback, Ed, on all, all the departments. I mean, it goes to a high rate of sellback. There's that many guys selling back all their.
So the union, the union contracts allow, all of the union contracts have different provisions for selling back vacation above a certain amount. But then there's also provisions to sell back vacation upon retirement. So if we know of a retirement that's coming up, we try to anticipate how much the sellback is, so we don't have to do a budget amendment later. But we also look at kind of the year-to-year, you know, what, what is a typical amount of sellback? And you can never, there's no way to model that or predict that with a huge degree of accuracy, but we do the best we can based on historical, and those are the numbers that are in there. And it's vacation sellback, and then some of the unions have sick and holiday sellback as well that they can do, if they, you know, down to a certain level.
I also get a lot of complaints about the water, um, what the water rates are going up to. And a lot of people are really complaining about that one. Uh, I know we go by this one company that sets the rates or gives us an idea, but, you know, and I realize we transfer over when we got the money in, in the water fund and the sewage fund over to the street. You told me that one time. Right?
We haven't done that in a very long time. That, that, I think you're talking about some different issues, when, back when the oil and gas fund was doing certain things. I can try to give a really brief history. We have bond covenants that require the, the income from the oil and gas fund to be made available if the water and sewer utilities need it. So if there was, let's give you a worst case now, if the Oaks prison closed, okay, they're a huge percentage of our water and sewer revenue. Until we could adjust rates in an orderly fashion, we would potentially have to supplement some of the revenues of the water and sewer utility with some oil and gas revenue to meet our bond covenants. That's the only connection between those two funds. We haven't done that in a very long time, because we wanted the water and sewer utility, and past councils wanted the water and sewer utility to be able to stand on their own, like they should. They're, they're, it's a rate payer, it's a enterprise fund, it's a utility, it's not a taxpayer subsidized operation. They also wanted to free up the oil and gas revenues to be able to fund capital projects and street improvements. So we've been on that path for a very, very long time. The rates that are proposed in here, if you go back 10, 11, 12 years ago, when we did the first rate study, they set the rates at 3.5%.
Right.
Okay. Um, what this has done, because we've gone through all of the sewer separation projects, we don't have any more sewers to separate, right? That was a huge draw. Most of the bond debt for the water and sewer utilities because of sewer separation. So by its very nature, the sewer costs are quite a bit higher than the water costs. We don't have a water plant, we, we have well water, so our water operation is pretty inexpensive compared to some communities. The latest rate update, which was a rate sufficiency analysis that was done as part of the drinking water asset management grant, looked at what the needs of the system were. So now the needs are shifting from the sewer utility more to the water utility because of all the concern for lead and service line replacements and older water mains and what have you mandates from the state. And so based on the projection of what those, uh, expenses might be over the next 10 years, they suggested, and the water utility requires that the rates be at a, increase at a higher rate than what they've been in the past. But on the flip side of that, the sewer utility doesn't need to have those rates increased as much. So when you take the combination of a higher water rate increase and a lower sewer rate increase, you still get to 3.5%. It's just going more on the water side of the bill. Now, yes, we do have some customers that are water only, and we do have some customers that are sewer only, so they will feel a little bit of a differential, this, uh, difference in that. But for the vast majority of our residential customers who are both water and sewer, it's still going to be just an overall 3.5% rate increase based on the way the bill is. And the reason that we need to have these orderly rate increases is to pay, obviously, the operations and the debt service, you have to pay that. And you have to pay to fund capital outlays, upgrades. So for example, we, you showed earlier, um, Fourth Street Water Main, the Water Main under US 31. If we don't have rate increases or enough revenue to be able to do that or to service the debt to do that, then those mains don't get replaced, and that street doesn't get rebuilt. And if we don't replace the water mains under US 31, and they rebuild it, and the water main breaks three days later, everybody's going to look very foolish. So that's the reason we have those rate increases, and that's how we got kind of where we're at.
Okay, just I know we had discussed it.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go to page 45, and I would like to know why the budget went up to 75,000 on the Ramstow. From our 50,000 that we paid. Is there some?
45?
Yep.
And what are you looking at?
Ramsdale.
Oh, the Ramstow.
Yep.
So we, Ramsdale came, the RCA came before us saying they were in need. Um, we are negotiating new contract with them, but that was a placeholder. Um, we're hoping to come to a conclusion soon, but that was just an additional amount to cover, to help keep it going, or at least to have negotiations start. But we plan to have a proposal in front of council with the budget on the 6th, is the plan.
Working on the contract.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Page. Trying to find where the. In, in page 123, the Marina Building. How come we go up in 60,000? Are we paying off that bill, Ed? Because it's going down to 30,000 in.
Yep. Um, Ed, as you recall, when they built the Marina Building, they had a lot of cost overruns. And so there was two loans that the Marina Building had, um, to make up the difference between the grant funding and, uh, what the cost of the building was. One of those loans got paid off in fiscal year '25, and then the second one will get paid off in fiscal year '26. So that's why that went down from 60 to 30,000, because that payment from the capital improvement fund, um, supported the Marina debt. Uh, the Marina doesn't have the revenues to support that debt. So it's been like that since the loans were taken out.
Okay, page 119, on the peg commission. Are people going to get any money back, or are they going to stop paying that monthly fee or whatever? Because people say, well, why are we paying for it? We don't have any service. I think we, I brought this up before to, that, uh, people couldn't get, hit the meetings or get anything here.
So I think there's a recent peg commission. Tom's the city liaison, if you want to give them update.
So we just had a peg commission meeting last night. Um, and so, so the fact was getting the fiber ran to, um, uh, not Jefferson Elementary, the new intermediate. Kennedy, yeah. To get the fiber ran to Kennedy School, so they could put it back online through Spectrum. Um, it came back as, I'm going to guess it was like $6,000 to get the fiber ran, and then it's going to cost about $600 a month to have the channel, um, broadcast over per month. The revenue that comes in from the charter will pay about half of that right now, so that's where they're planning on moving forward. They plan on getting a better timeline, um, by the next meeting, on when this charter will be able to, or Spectrum will be able to start the work and that. But it's, I believe it's 11 cents per cable subscriber, and that's the money that they get to help broadcast. And they were saying yesterday that that covers about 50% of what charter is going to be charging them to own the channel to broadcast that out.
So, when do they figure this out?
So we're supposed to, we just got the proposal from that, it passed yesterday. They voted to approve to, to spend the funds to get that rolling. And then, now that that's done, they're signing the paperwork today, and they should get an estimate on when that work will begin by Spectrum by our next meeting.
Okay. Good, thanks. A lot of people are interested in that. Bill, on, on page 65, we have the administrative services for City Hall, and we have a full-time janitor. Uh, we also had a part-time one. He got sick. We had the second guy helping him. He got sick, and now we still, for the budget for 2025 is 24,000. Where's that going?
So we took, we took that part-time position out of the budget. Um, that was one of the, yeah, so it's at zero now. So we're not, we're not proposing a part-timer this next year.
That position was authorized in the prior budget, but it was never filled.
Right.
Yep.
I, I know the guy got sick, and then the other got, got sick, and Hanson's been off now.
Mark is back at work.
Yep. Good. Okay, let me go to. Okay, we got Mr. Blue working for us, page, uh, 118. Charge for service, building permits and all that. Um, administration, I take it as his wages, 68,000. Budgeted 30,000 for 2025, then it goes down to 20,000, and budgeted for 25, 12,000. Can you explain that one to me?
Sure. So the building inspection fund is a little bit unique in that the revenues in there can only be used to fund building inspection services. We budget for Mr. Blue's wages and benefits fully in the community development department for ease of budgeting and, and pay an administration fee back to the general fund to help defray his costs. But we don't have enough building activity in the city to fully pay for Mr. Blue's salary. The reason that that, um, administrative fee has gone down is because there's not enough building activity to generate enough fees to pay for all the expenses of the building department, and then reimburse the city. So we have to adjust that, that reimbursement back to the general fund accordingly. And, um, the reason it was so high in 2024 is, you'll recall, we had a totally different, um, mechanism. We were in transition, we were starting up a new department, and so we had a lot of other costs that were in there in that, in that fiscal year '24 budget.
Just for now.
For now, you're done?
You know, I don't give up.
I don't have any specific questions. I'm kind of learning as I go. Um, already, some of the thoughts that I had while I was reviewing this have already been brought up and answered. I do have a lot of questions about Ramstow, and I don't know when those get discussed or answered. I don't believe I've ever seen a income and expense report that satisfies me. Um, and when I look at, um, some of the supplemental information in the back of the book, I see that everybody else that's, you know, asking for additional funds, they also show us what they took in for, um, fundraising, and what this costs, and what that costs, and, you know, so where are we in balancing that budget? Um, I don't know how anybody can make an educated decision on what we've got in front of us right now. So.
So, learning more about the Ramstow, they are a component unit of government. Um, they were incorporated and actually, um, because of their ties to the building, um, and they actually, part of their bylaws, it's to, to function, to, um, continue, um, to enhance the Ramstow. So that's kind of, there's a whole, I'll, I'll send that to the group, but there's an entire, um, checklist about what makes them a component unit. So there's that aspect of them, but we've been, actually, their finances, their revenue and expenditures have been run through the city. So we do have reports on there.
Okay. I don't know that I've seen it or know where to look. I can tell right now where Ed's going. This would not have been where I would have looked. Um.
So we can send.
So in your, in your monthly agenda packets, when you have revenue and expenditure reports, it's fund number 597. So they're always in there, you can go back and look at, um, you know, look at the reports, and then the balance sheets in there, uh, on the months that we, or the meetings that we have those.
Okay.
So it's got, um, it's got all the revenue categories, and then it's, you know, obviously got all the expense categories.
I guess I would like to see that somehow as, um, so Joe Violinist comes in. Here's his cost. Here's what our ticket sales were. You know, did we win or lose on that? That's what I'd like to see before I start handing out more money.
So I would recommend that you get with Laura Ortiz, because.
If we've asked for that information in the past and haven't gotten it.
When I was on the board, and it probably just needs to be asked again, um, these financial statements are set up like they are. I don't have flexibility to be able to change this. But what she does is she does something that's called a sources and uses for every concert, and it shows all of that information that you're looking for. So, uh, for instance, when we had Greggy and the Jets there, which was an Elton John tribute band, it, it shows, uh, and generally, the way she did it, now, I can't speak to her now because I haven't been on the board for almost a year, but you would have an estimate of what the concert was going to bring in. And then, when it was done, you did kind of a wrap-up to kind of compare that.
Right.
And see what it was. And, um, generally, and, you know, that was something that Xavier used to do as well. Um, generally, they did them for, and it's not going to be for every single thing, if it's just a little, but for the major shows, they definitely do those.
Okay. All right. So I should contact Laura to get that, or somebody will?
Well, I think if, if the Ramstow's a hot topic that we all want to discuss more, I think we could make it a, um, a study session item. I mean, if, if council's agreeable to that, and we can invite them in to talk more about specific questions.
Okay.
They do a monthly report that's sent to the board in the newsletter section, and they, it'll reference some of that.
It breaks it down like that? Breaks it down like that?
Yeah. And then what's going on with they, like he's.
Okay. Okay. So then I guess back to, I'm gonna let other questions be asked because I think it, it brings things to my mind too then. So I might just pop in here and there with a comment.
Well, I got one question, or I've got several, but one, the first one would be on that recycling. And I know we had people speaking that wanted to have curbside recycling. If I understand it correctly, it's not actually required till the 28th, is it? For a town in our size, according to that act?
I believe it's required in January of 2026.
Are you sure for our, I looked it up. I looked it up, and it says for 90%, that act was for.
And we're considered an urban area, according to the U.S. Census, so that's, I can, we can find that state law. I can send that to you.
Okay. I looked.
I've sent it before, but I think it was before you on the board, but I'll send it again.
Up again too, so I'm questioning that. And I'm not against recycling. I just, that, is it 660 a month that the people will be charged? And can you opt out of that? I mean, some people aren't here full-time. They don't recycle. They don't. And when I say they don't recycle, there's some people that have a little sack of trash that they don't need to recycle. And is it going to be billed on our water bill or is it how?
So it'll, it will be billed on the water bill, just like the refuse services. It'll be a separate line item. I, and I don't want to speak for Republic, but the way that they price their services, they have to have a certain number of customers to make it.
Feasible.
Feasible. So they've based their pricing on all 3,500 or whatever the number is of residential customers being in curbside recycling. And you either use it or you don't. That's up to you. But otherwise, if you, if you allow people to opt out, you're gonna drive that price up for everybody else. And at some point, you have to have 90%. So we, we did make an accommodation, and we worked, we went round and round with Republic in a collaborative way to make the bags available. We used to never have bags in the city like that, when, when they had totes for everybody. So this way, that's, it gives them, you know, people that are, just don't use that much garbage or generate that much to have that option. But in terms of the options of being able to opt out of curbside, I don't know that that question was ever posed to AJ, was it, Bill, on how that would work? I don't know.
Yeah, we can, we can look into that a little bit more.
Because that gets expensive when you, when you add, we have an increase of property taxes, 4%. We have an increase in the water bill. And then do we get that or does Republican, who gets the trash can? That's going up from 1775 to 1950. Does that cost come to, does that money come to us or does that go to Republic?
Well, we collect the money and then we pay the bill to Republic, so.
What do, what do they charge for that can per month?
They don't do it on a per can, per month basis. It's based on the, the volume of garbage, the weight and the tonnage and, and the service that they provide. And we just spread that out over the accounts. So that's how you arrive at that amount.
Right, that 1950. I mean, and over your lifetime, if we've been in our house 30, 40 years, you've got, I don't know. I just, I thought that's, everything's only $2, but pretty soon, these $2 have ended up to be a couple hundred more on your water.
So we, we bid out the refuse service this year. We had one, one respondent, which is kind of what we figured would happen because they have a competitive advantage with the landfill being here. They had given us an estimate prior to that. They actually came in when they bid it. It came down a little bit from what they were gonna negotiate a contract. So from that regard, the RFP process was successful. But, you know, if you went with any other hauler, you're gonna, nobody else responded, and you're probably gonna be paying more. So they did increase their fees. But remember, they were, we had them capped in a contract that, when there was rampant inflation. So they've gotta make adjustments too. And I think if you look at the 1950 per month, it's very economical compared to what people in the townships pay. And also, it's fairly economical compared to a lot of other communities, especially downstate.
We're paying on our taxes too. So it's, I'm based on our taxable values at 1.51 mils. So the taxes, you know, we, we are paying for garbage and sewer and water. And so people are questioning that, I think. And then.
So let's look at that a little bit because I think that's important to explore. So the refuse fund gets about $275,000 of property taxes, 282. But it gets about 930,000 plus penalties, 950,000 from fees and charges. So the, the refuse fund pays for a lot more than just the garbage. It pays for all of your brush pickup. It pays for all of your, the composting and the leaf pickup. That all runs through this fund. And so there's a lot of equipment and guys and stuff that are required. I mean, those are more services rather than a utility, where I think people think of their garbage as being a utility. And there was a large debate in past councils 10, 15 years ago about whether there should be any millage rate or it should be all, all on the, on your bill? Is it a utility or is it a service? And there was never a resolution on that. It came up every budget. But what I can tell you, the city has done is we've not raised that millage rate. We have the ability to raise the millage rate if council wants to because we're not at our highest level on that particular millage, which is a separate law. We've always increased the monthly bill for that. Back in the day, I think the, when it was two-thirds on the millage and maybe one-third on the bill, the tax structure for federal income tax and what have you was a little bit different, where it was easier to write things off. You could write off your property taxes and whatever. Now that they've changed that, it doesn't make as much sense. Most people are just taking the standard deduction. So the, you know, the question becomes, how do you fund the services that, that we're providing? And it's always been this hybrid system. But council certainly could say, nope, we're not gonna do the millage. We're gonna put it all on the water bill and we'll adjust the rates accordingly. Or they could say, you know what? We think the rates are too high and we'd like to raise the millage rate. I mean, that's a council policy decision.
Well, I'd kind of like to say, I, I think that's a big increase in times that the expenses for everything are going up right now. We're in an inflationary period. So I, I don't know if there's anything we could do on that, you know, take it from somewhere else. And I didn't realize, I was thinking the DPW, the brush and stuff came out of DPW. But you're saying the brush and the leaf is actually.
I'm saying the DPW does it, but we reimburse for the, the material and the labor.
Okay.
Now, one thing to keep in mind is, once we get through the PFAS unknowns, and we have a better idea of what those costs are gonna be on an annual basis for monitoring and what have you, because we may still have to install some wells, the DEQ or Eagle may want us to do some more exploration. We just don't know because they haven't gotten back to us. But once we get to that point where those costs are more known, there's probably, and we get through the first couple of years of curbside recycling, so we can see what the numbers look like, there's probably the ability to maybe ratchet back and start to eat down some fund balance a little bit. We did that one other time in the refuse fund where we were, we were kind of bringing in a little more money maybe each year than, than the expenses were. And so we, we kind of reduced the rate increases from what they, so they were not as high as what the contractual increases were, and we ate into that fund balance. So we got to the point where it was not comfortable to do that anymore, and then we continued back. So we, we might have some ability to do that in future budget years. Again, assuming council wants to go ahead with, with everything as was presented in the budget.
I'd still like to look a little bit more at that because, yes, yes.
Well, we've got that open for discussion. And I'm asking because I don't know, is there such a thing as a smaller recycling container that would be more cost-effective? And the reason I ask that is I lived in Green Bay for 12 years and they had curbside recycling. Not once did we ever fill our curbside recycling bin for just my husband and I. I mean, now, a family of five is gonna fill it more than I am. But Green Bay doesn't even have bottle and can returns. So all of that went into our recycling bin. I don't know that I like the sound of a bag because you know what happens when you put out bags. They don't get closed properly or, you know, all of a sudden, it's all over the streets. But, or maybe go to a once a month curbside or something to take.
Twice a month, yeah, with that.
Well, it's only twice.
Yeah, so the, the state law is requires twice a month.
Oh, okay.
And then, and I don't know if you can see, that's very small, but it says that January 1st, 2026, at least 90% of single-family dwellings in urban areas identified by the most recent federal census. And we're, we're one of those federal census, urban areas.
The next line, the 5,000.
But I can, I'll send you that.
And this twice weekly is a typo. It's supposed to say twice monthly.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So this looks more like a trash barrel. It's not going to match our current curbside. Okay, because ours in Green Bay.
That is a stock generic image I just plucked off the internet to get the idea.
It would be a similar.
Eight ones. We're the same size as our dumpsters that we have for trash.
That's, I believe, what the proposal is from Republic, is to have a similar large.
Okay.
But I think we did have discussions with them about a smaller one.
I don't even know if it exists, you know? But the years ago, you used to have it just like a mail. Remember that, what we used to carry our mail in?
I thought this was gonna be.
Yeah. Now, the one we had in Green Bay was the same size as our, our trash barrel.
Well, I, I did get calls on that. They don't, there's many areas in town that don't have a garage. And they said, you know, you're, you're concerned with blight, and now you're gonna give everybody another big trash can. And I looked at that and said, no, I, it's gonna be smaller. It's not gonna be that great big one. But they were concerned if it is that great big one, they don't have a garage at their place. The houses are close together.
Well, you can avoid blight just by keeping it clean and rounded. Don't, don't let them bully you.
No, but, no, but two trash cans, I don't, I don't have room for two trash big ones in my garage with a car.
That's why they're covered in nice, so that even if you see them, I mean, just. But I, I guess I don't know now if that's what they'll use or the big ones. So yeah, maybe we can just.
Yeah, we can, we can talk to Republic some more. So two of the topics we've talked about, the Ramsdale and Republic, I mean, those still have to come to council in terms of contracts. So, you know, there's time between now and, and maybe we can do more of an in-depth with those two items.
Bill, didn't we talk about though, putting a couple of different for paper and glass and all that at one time? That ain't coming.
So part of, part of it is gonna be educating the population about what is recyclable. And this would be like a co-mingled, but there's different things they take. And some, they end up taking it to a recycling facility. And what that recycling facility, the end use, that can change. So I think the idea is they used to kind of put it on the container, what's recyclable, but that can change. So I think glass used to be something that was recycled a lot, and then they, there wasn't much place for it. And they really just crush it. But I think what we've learned is it's subject to change. They try not, but there's certain things that always, you know, metals, plastic, things like that. Were you asking if there'd be separate?
They're gonna be separate containers or one?
Just one, yeah. I don't know how, we'd have a lot of containers if we did separate, but. Yeah, it'd just be one.
Okay.
Couple more, no, you did good. Thank you, Kate. Couple employee questions. The HSA, how do we, what is that based on? It looks, does, who gets those, the HSAs, and how much?
So we contribute to each employee an amount to their HSA. They can contribute above that. There's a.
1,500 for an individual, 3,000 for a family. But does that offer to everybody? Are we doing it on every employee?
Well, every employee that has our health insurance, because we have a high deductible health plan. So the deductible for a single is 2,000, and the deductible for a family is 4,000. So the HSA, we went to that plan design probably six or seven years ago because it's, it was more of an incentive for the employees to manage their healthcare because when you have money in an HSA account, that becomes yours and you can either spend it or save it. And if you save it, then it's available in retirement. And so the idea was to give incentives for the employees to better manage their healthcare, but to keep the deductible similar to what it had been. And the employees also, in, you know, every time we have a premium increase, they share in paying that as well. So the employee's cost goes up every year that we have more than a 5% premium increase.
So every, every married employee gets the $3,000 that is in our healthcare plan?
Everybody who has a family plan.
Has a family plan, gets the 3,000.
Yep.
Okay. And then who gets the physical, and I, what is, how's that computed? And who all gets the, I forget what you call it, like the physical fitness?
Thing. So there's a YMCA test regimen that employees are able to go do. I think they're gonna be testing here shortly, right, Josh?
May.
In May. And depending on what they score on that, they can get 500, 250 or, yeah, 500 or 250. So it's either excellent or good.
So it's offered to every, every employee again? Okay. Let me see. The MAPS pool, and I'm not sure the page, but did that increase from 30,000 to 40,000? No, okay. We're gonna keep it at the 30?
No, it's always been 40.
Yeah. I said 30 in here.
I know they put a 30 in there now.
It says 30 in this book.
It's been 40.
I wonder if that's just what we paid to date because it's a quarterly payment.
Find it. The book's at 30 somewhere.
Yeah.
You saw that, Jim? I'll look that up. We don't have to, I'll, I'll look that up where it did say the 30 and just question.
Yeah, so that's just activity thus far.
Yeah, so that, that either was a typo on the 2024 activity or there was a payment that maybe it was 50. It spanned a fiscal year and got messed up in there. But it's been 40,000 since the first contract, and that didn't go up in the second contract.
The 40's correct, not the 30. Uh, let's see, got a few more here. It seemed, and I, I, looking through the software and computer, everybody has a budget for copier maintenance and software. And they seem kind of high. So do we have like, is everybody's copier on independent contractor? Or does one guy?
So that, there's a lot more in that line item than just copiers. And not every department has a copier built to it. But for example, we use citywide document imaging software called Laserfish, and that comes out of Heather's budget. We use our BSNA Enterprise accounting software and ERP system, and that gets charged primarily to my department, but some of it goes to the bill or to community development. Some of it goes to assessing. We have our Microsoft Office 365. That gets spread amongst the different departments. So there's lots of different softwares, and it depends on the department, that gets booked to those line items. It's not just copy costs.
No, it says software. It says copier.
Primarily software.
Copier maintenance and software. So everybody gets a, basically, a yearly update. And then the administration fees, let's say like on, the administration fees on, almost everybody has it. Say for instance, on the sewer on page 97. Employee costs of administration.
Yep. Right in the middle.
What's included in that?
So that's a flat percentage. I, right off the top of my head, I don't remember what it is without looking it up. But that's paid back to the general fund to offset costs that are provided to the water and sewer utility that aren't otherwise recorded in here. So it's a portion of, you know, City Hall time, because I spend a lot of time on the water and sewer utility. It's a portion of Bill's time. It's a portion of the utility billing clerk, who's a general fund employee but provides almost all the services to the water and sewer utility. So almost every one of our enterprise funds and many of our special revenue funds have a administration fee that's set at a flat percentage that gets paid back to the general fund.
Okay, so then that's, that would be revenue to the general.
Correct.
Correct, and it's actually transferred. Okay, and so is that the same thing then in the oil and gas? There was a $68,000 administration fee?
The, well, there's a $68,000 management fee. That's paid to the fund manager.
So they manage that fund for 68,000 a year? That's the total cost?
Well, it's, it's a, it's a percentage. It, it goes up as the fund grows.
But that's, okay.
It's a very low.
That's fairly fair.
It's a very low percentage.
Yes, I, that's what my question was. Got just a couple more here. Oh, it mentioned ARPA funds on the North River Walk and also on the Veterans Drive.
What page?
Oh, I don't know the page, but my question isn't about that. It's, do we still have ARPA money?
So the ARPA money, we took it as, because the federal government changed the rules because they realized it was unworkable when they first did them. And they allowed communities that were getting less than $10 million to just deem it all as revenue replacement. All you had to do is say, we lost revenue during COVID. We're gonna take all of our grant as revenue replacement. But City Council allocated those dollars over a three-year period to different projects. And so to the extent that those projects aren't quite complete yet, there is still some ARPA money that will go to them. But it's just setting in our fund balance.
Okay, so it's already, it's not like we have an ARPA account sitting out.
No, it's all.
A lot of money in it, unfortunately. Let me see. There was a couple more. Getting close. And I've got some questions on, and Teresa's here, on the planning and zoning, and Andrew too. That one went quite, quite a bit up, went from 175, 793, the total planning and zoning to 286, the projected, or a budget for 2025.
He's bringing it up here, Jim.
Well, remember, we were, we were outsourcing. So a couple, so there's a lot that happened. That's why these numbers have moved. So we outsourced both building inspection and, to a, to a firm and planning and zoning. So when we bring those back in-house and you plan fiscal years and you're, you're doing things, you, you, you get numbers that get skewed and look weird.
And I'd just like to point out, both of those contracts, I think the county was gonna raise it. And I'd just like to point out both of those contracts, I think the county was gonna raise it forty percent. And also for the inspection, they wanted to raise it as well. So those, those wouldn't be static if they continued.
And so, and then on the same one, like professional and consulting services, that's different than administration and management. So who who is the professional and consulting services? That went from one fifty-one to seven thousand.
So AGS is, does the code, so it is electrical, mechanical, so the and plumbing. So they provide inspectors for that.
Okay.
But this line item here, Councilmember Lasky is, and Teresa, I can pull up the notes. Remember what you have, what's embedded in your seven thousand here? It's consultant stuff, right, for planning commission and what have you?
Yep, and it's also like if we've had to do extra surveys or any extra work, just, yeah.
And then the planning commission. Is that, did they get a budget out of this or the planning commission is eighteen hundred?
Yep.
Yep, that right there goes for classes that they take.
Okay.
If we have.
Membership or?
Yeah, membership. Yeah, that's really about it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And it's good. I just was just looking at it, not sure, so. And then a couple of things I did notice that. That muse, yours, thank you. The museum, he has kept that at, I'm gonna give him a shout out. At, that's a bare bones operation. We're fortunate to have it. And I think is it ninety-five hundred? I just thought he didn't ask for a dime more and he's running a good little museum. It's an asset to the community. And same thing with Barry Lynn. He, you know, that was used to be forty thousand a year, I believe. And Barry has done that. That used to be a paid position, if I'm not mistaken by Mike.
Delison.
Yes. And Barry has done that free and excellent. So I just want, I thought both of those, it's nice to see that in the budget when both those people are. Mark Feder at the museum and Barry Lynn are giving us a good service as a city.
But it's the same amount you think we would raise it.
Pardon me?
If we, we would raise it. I mean, it's been the same amount for years.
It's been the same amount. And I, but they are doing fundraising. They have membership drives. I mean, they're, the little museum is doing a great job. I think that's it. Wes?
Oh, it's my turn.
Yes.
My second round of of budgeting. And I don't, everything that's, that I've had questions on has already been addressed. And Ed and Bill.
Oh, I.
I I love it when people fire questions at you guys and you just come right back.
It worries me what's gonna happen.
No hesitation. It makes me realize that the city and the taxpayers are in good hands and you are to be commended.
Absolutely, I agree.
You know, and the department heads, there's not a single department head that that I think that as far as I've read through that I look at and go, boy, you know, somebody's trying to pull the wool over our eyes. We've got a couple of challenges that we're looking at, whether it be AAY funding or certainly the Ramsdale, getting through that process has been very time consuming for at least several of us here. We'll get through it, but keep up the great work and and thank you all. That's impressive. And I hold my, if I have any questions after anybody else speaks.
Julia?
I I do have questions. I'm just looking on page twelve at the beginning. And I'm seeing that we have nearly a million dollars increase from this year's budget to last year's. And I ain't mad because almost all of it, it's re, you know, filling all the positions that have been vacant in our emergency services and they've been, they've been needed for a long time. So I'm very grateful for the recruiting efforts of our first responders and getting those positions filled. So I understand that's a part of the operating expense and then we have capital outlay in our capital plan. Could you, I I'm looking at the debt service. What is a healthy rate of holding debt for a city our size? Ten percent is what I'm seeing here. How has it been in the past?
Um, so I think this overview on this page, this budget summary is is designed to be very high level and topical. So I'll just make a couple of comments. Yes, the budget increased a million dollars from the previous year. Keep in mind, you can get two grants that will total a million dollars. So the primary thing that the changes or drives these increases are differences in in grants and capital projects. Because those fluctuate from year to year where our operating expenses tend to just kind of go fairly smoothly unless we're, you know, adding up headcount and things like that, which we didn't do in this budget. In terms of the debt, their debt is very compartmentalized in a municipality. So water and sewer debt is the, by far the biggest amount. And if you look on page, let me get it here real quick. On the city indebtedness page, it's on page forty.
Yeah.
You can see that we've got thirty-two million dollars of revenue bond debt. That's primarily sewer, a little bit of water. And we've got eight million dollars of general obligation debt. So the standards as to what percentages you can have are totally different. And in fact, revenue bonds that are issued by the water and sewer utility don't even count against the city's debt limit. So our debt limit is is basically based on the stuff that's supported by tax dollars and we're way, way below that limit. The eight million dollars that you see there, that shows is general obligation bonds. If you look at this next page here, you'll see that the primary amount of this, you can see revenue, 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 revenue. Oh, here's a long term. It's a twenty twenty capital improvement bond. So what the twenty twenty capital improvement bond did is we rolled up a bunch of projects that needed to happen. There was probably ten or twelve different projects in there. And we let that bond so that we could do those. And we're, we're just finishing up the last of those projects now. One of them is the fire station, right? That's getting finished up. And then the Washington Street reconstruction or redoing, they're gonna redo part of the water main. And the portion of that bond, even though that's a capital improvement bond, there's a portion of that that still is also being paid by the water and sewer utility because there's water and sewer projects in there. So we don't have very much debt that is tax supported. It's almost all revenue bond supported. And the bonds that I talk about possibly letting here in the future will be revenue bonds. The only capital improvement bond that I can foresee coming up might be something in conjunction with the DDA, depending on what their streetscape plans are. But that's to be determined because we don't, we haven't gotten that far in the process yet.
So when we're talking about water and sewer bonds, for instance, with the thirty-one project.
Uh huh.
We're carrying capacity. We're not carrying a lot of debt, let's say. It's mostly revenue bonds. It's not debt servicing bonds. But I did have a question.
Well, well, let me just be clear. That's debt. When I, when I say a revenue bond, what that means is it's supported by the revenues of the water and sewer utility. It's still debt.
Gotcha.
There's thirty million dollars of debt that the city has to pay back on its, on its water and sewer utility. And we'll pay, I mean, the the loans that we took out for the wastewater treatment plant and closing off the last downfall and build, that's, that's a forty-year rural development bond. You're gonna be paying that for forty years.
So how does that look to city taxpayers?
I think it looks very good because the interest rates that we got on those were very low and we were being forced to do it. So if I was a city taxpayer, I'd be happy that we could finance that through rural development rather than doing it over twenty years because your rates would have had to have gone up a lot to do that.
So I did have a question because on page seventy-eight, there is a debt service line item?
Yep.
Like a department?
Where are you seeing it? On page seventy-eight?
Mine says page seventy-eight. It's called debt service. It comes after civic auditorium. See, look, mine says page seventy-eight.
Debt service?
Yeah, it's actually debt service.
Yeah, so this, so this is the, a portion of the twenty twenty capital improvement bond.
Okay.
Okay, so this twenty thirteen capital improvement refunding bond here. This was, we had actually issued a bond back in two thousand and three to do city hall. And we refinanced that in twenty thirteen to save money. And that got paid off in twenty twenty-four. And knowing that that was gonna be paid off, previous councils decided to issue the twenty twenty bond, knowing that we're gonna have money available to help pay for that come twenty twenty. When, when the twenty thirteen capital improvement refunding bond got paid off in twenty twenty-four. Does that make sense?
It does. So right now, the Marina or the, the, there was just something that was paid off and that was fifty-three thousand dollars. That's no longer debt servicing?
So the Marina had two loans. One was a, an install, it's not a bond. It's an, it was an installment purchase contract from a bank. And then there was an internal loan and it, I believe it just paid off the internal loan. And then there's still one, one payment left in this coming, upcoming fiscal year to the bank. And then the Marina will be debt-free.
And I'm simply asking because as we're talking about some capital outlays coming up, we have some options here to pay it out of general revenue. You've talked a little bit about bonds. We've talked a little bit about like a financing for trucks and materials that are typical to, you know, that are similar to consumer loans, but maybe different for a municipality. So I just wanted to have an understanding of our, like, our financial health in relation to some of those options as we look at some of the decisions that need to be made moving forward.
So if you look at the city indebtedness part, Councilmember Raddatz, we talk about the bond debt and then the other debt. So we, we only have about five hundred thousand dollars of what I'll call, and they're all installment purchase contracts. That's really the only way a municipality can borrow besides issuing a bond. I can't just go to the bank and and get a note or or get a, you know, it has to be authorized by state statute. And generally, it's a installment purchase.
Okay.
But you can see when you go down here, you know, those are the things that are the more, maybe a little bit smaller capital projects or equipment. So you have plow trucks on, you have an ambulance, you have our Vector truck. We financed the Ramsdale HVAC system fifteen years ago. It's paid off in twenty twenty-seven. That was the biggest one we've ever done in my tenure, the Marina building. So you've got, you've got those items there and that, those are typically how we finance those. But I, but I guess the bigger picture is you have to separate the the utility debt. It's, it's self-supporting. And then the taxpayer-supported debt is a much smaller piece of that and we're in good shape there.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Have anything else?
No, that was.
Okay. A few more, Liz?
I just had two questions I didn't ask. One is there, the parks waters, twenty-four thousand budgeted a year. Is that arbitrary number or do we actually have meters in the parks?
No, we have all ours per.
All our parks.
Yeah, there's no free water. Our bond covenants don't allow it. So everything, everything that gets water is metered.
Every park has a meter then?
That's my understanding is.
Okay.
Yeah. That's why that, and that's mainly for sprinkling, mainly for sprinkling in the restrooms, right? You know, if they have them, so.
Many restrooms, but we have a few. And then the lighthouse project. It's not opening till next year, but we're gonna allocate the, when does that start in June? Or when do we start paying that fifteen thousand? And what does that cover for this year? We're not renting a house, right? For the first year? I mean, nobody's, nobody's manning the lighthouse. We don't have to rent a house for the summer. Is that, do we? They're gonna start working on it, but I'm just wondering.
I can get you some more specifics on that. And I know that they're, they're applying for grants and.
Okay.
Things. I hope they, they're probably hoping we'll be flexible with, you know, the current year allocation and maybe the next year. But they are planning on working there. I'm not sure the exact timeline, but I can get you that.
We're not, I mean, there, there won't be lighthouse keepers this year, so we're probably not paying rent. I would not hope, I would hope we were not paying rent for a lighthouse keeper this year unless they're, even if they're working there. I mean, they live in Luddington.
Oh, they do live in Luddington.
The ones that spoke that day lived in Luddington. I mean, some of the workers.
Splica has an office in Luddington, but they do, they recruit.
The volunteers.
Yeah, they recruit volunteers from all over. And then they, they, part of it is they live in the area that they work on the lighthouse. So they really are from all over, but Splica does have an office in Luddington. The volunteers are from all over the place.
The gentleman that spoke to us lives in Manistee.
Yes, you're right. He was grieving.
Grieving.
Grieving for Manistee.
Yep.
I think that's it.
Nothing else?
No.
Most of mine got answered, so I do have a question about the, the housing north. Or is that phasing out? Because I see that it keeps going down.
So we allocated ten thousand. I did talk with Yaro Brown. They did ask if we considered funding twenty. We did put ten. It was gonna be more of a, a different type of contract arrangement, more of a, an hourly or pay as. So it'll be up to that amount is what, what that would look like. But I believe Tracy Davis started in September, so we still have a couple more months under the current contract.
Okay.
But, yeah, I think we're hoping to use, use them for some consulting with, you know, with the housing commission work. And they've been helpful with the CHIL grant. And so there's been some, there's been benefits with it. I think we're just looking to kind of do a as-needed type situation with that.
Okay, and then I just have the regular, the Ramsdale, the Republic, the AAY. I think that's, oh, I wanted to address the water thing. So we have water up here because it's hot in the summertime and I bought cases, so I just will continue to do that. So, I mean, that shouldn't be an issue. That's all I have, if anybody else.
Was the AAY asking for eighteen thousand dollars?
Eighteen thousand eight hundred.
Yeah.
Well, welcome to Ed. Come up here and present that.
I think they're coming the next meeting.
They run a pretty, it's a pretty tight, I mean, their, their wages and stuff are.
My, my issue with that is the fundraising.
Yeah, that was my question.
Cause they made, they fundraised two hundred and seventy-five, two hundred and forty-five dollars last year.
If they come up here, maybe we can ask them.
Yeah, because I, that's exactly what I looked at is they said they were going to raise seventeen hundred or something. And so they obviously didn't do much fundraising. So that's, that's same way with Ramsdale. I just have a hard time just handing money when I don't know.
Right.
What they're doing to help.
I mean, they came up and present every year, but I'd like to know about this, eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, I have one more. Okay, Bill, on the pickleball. All of a sudden, we come up with three hundred and fifty thousand projected costs. Where did that come out of? Cause we had fifty thousand, I thought, put in the budget.
What page are you on, Jim?
Page twenty-four of the capital improvement.
What page did you say, Jim?
Page twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Oh.
So it is.
My page twenty.
I think the, the idea behind it was they're trying to fund, you know, a certain amount each year to get up to the amount where we could actually build it. It is an expensive item.
But Bill, you've been having meetings with them, haven't you?
With the pickleball people? I think we, you know, I haven't had ones lately. We were kind of looking at potentially the Jefferson area. But I know we talked about Sands Park, but yeah, I haven't had recent conversations with them. I think we're, you know, funding it's been a, a big issue.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because when they approached me about it, they said they would raise the money. And that's why I'm concerned about, why we're worried about it. They, they, cause when they built the one in Parkdale, they got, that was all donated. They might've got grants, I don't know. But Rechers said that they'll raise the money and they had a guy that was pretty good or he was gonna donate a hundred thousand.
Okay, I'll reach out to him again. It's time to check in with him and.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I just thought, why should we pay? I mean, I'd like to see the seniors get there. We're the last ones around here, I think, getting a pickleball. And then on page thirty-one of the street capital projects. We're gonna be doing a streetscape anyway. Is there a reason why we have to paint the light poles? I mean, we might as well do it all at one time. No. I mean, forty thousand one year and twenty the next. And, and they're gonna be doing sidewalks and all that and taking those things out and putting new ones in, I hope.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think the thinking behind the street poles was that they're not, as part of any streetscape, they're not gonna be replacing those and they're getting to the point where they need some refurbishment. So Jeff has been taking however many a year and getting them redone and then replacing them. And if we get the RAP grant for the, the west end of River Street down nearby in front of the Marina, he wanted to be able to take some out, get them done and then put in new shiny ones there and then just kind of keep working his way down. But that's been an initiative that, that he's been trying to, to get done because they do need some, some sprucing up.
Yeah, a lot of them are cracked in and the paint is coming off. And I just thought if they're gonna be doing a streetscape, it'd be just as easy. And I know it's a lot of work. Okay, that's good.
And these ones here, the, so these are replaced. This, there's two different projects here in the capital improvement fund. One is on River Street. One is on River Street.
Right.
And this, replacing the street lights, is up Maple Street from River up to First.
Yeah.
So we're putting in those acorn lights, we had some very rusted-out poles on, on Maple, then they were actually, I think there were some areas where it was a hazard, so they replaced them with the wood poles. This would be, as Ed mentioned, kind of bringing that ornamental light south on River, on Maple Street.
Did they take those bases out, because people tell me they were tripping over them? Did they take them out?
The bases of?
From the old poles?
Oh, I can, I think they might have taken, they did take out a few, they, I'll have to take a look at that.
Okay, that's good.
Questions?
No.
Questions? Lani, do you have any more questions?
No.
So, the Ramsdale, the recycling, and the AAY, we're going to discuss that again when they come in front of us?
Yes, yeah, I'll talk to them, maybe we can, they come next week, next council meeting, or the.
It'd be better if they could come next week, because there's any changes or anything.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see if they're available, and then I'll go down, I can go down my list, if anyone wants to see. So I'm going to check on the, the costs, you're talking about the water, you know, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to check the water, at the amount we pay for that, report that back. Ramsdale income expense report, component unit paperwork, financial statements, sources and uses, profit, loss, I'll send that to council. State law about the recycling, I'll send, I'll send information about that and show the census list about us listed as an urban area. Is there a smaller recycling container option? I'll look into that pain pool, if that was a missed payment, I think it might have been. About the timing for the lighthouse and for next year in terms of house rental, and talk to Mr. Beech about pickleball, that's kind of my name.
It's Mr. Beech, that Dr. Beech?
Yeah, Dr. Beech there.
Let's do a projection to maybe, we could all do it, I could do it, on some of the water bills, just to see what the increase is actually going to be per person. I know you had one in there, Ed, but I don't, I, I've got to look and see how many gallons we use, and just, you know, and.
So let me just.
You had one in there.
It may already answer your question, hang on here.
You've got to be no more than 1,000 or two, one or two. You've got to be one or two, because I think we're four or five.
No, that's what I'm saying.
So.
Could be two.
On page 88, Councilmember Lasky?
Yes, thanks.
You can see it on your screen there too, if you want. So this is an illustrative monthly bill, depending on your use. We've always, at least since I've been here, used 6,000 gallons, which is probably heavy for some people, but there's some people that use more than that, so that's why we show all the different increments, and it shows you what your bill would be with the proposed increase.
For the water and the sewer.
So this is on, this is on, yeah, this shows both water and sewers. I also have that on the sewer side, but, and then what the.
And then we'll add on the recycling, and then the trash bin, and the, I mean, just so people know what we're actually paying, what they're paying for that.
The one thing that I think if we do do the curbside recycling, or when we do the curbside recycling, that I think you'll see some people doing, which is probably good that we have a bag option, is if they recycle more, they may not need a tote. So if I'm not filling up a tote much now, and I just like the convenience of it, I may, I still may go to a bag, because it may be cheaper for me. So they do have the ability to control their costs a little bit, because we have that bag option.
Yes.
And we have hundreds and hundreds of customers that use bags. I don't, I don't know the exact count, but it's several hundred.
Now, are the bags going up with the totes, Ed?
The price on the bags, so I think it did go up a little bit, let's see here. We haven't raised that since that system went into place, but I just need to find the. I'll find it here, oh, here it is, roughly, so the bags would go from 250 to 275.
And I would encourage anybody who's here or just watching to, to look at the amount of work that was put into the budget, and analyze it, and see how it does affect you, see where the city spends your money. That I think it's worthwhile to look at, and the budget's available online, we do a good job of putting stuff online, but it's your responsibility, I believe, to, to look at it and make sure that you're in agreement with how we're spending your money.